Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us on the media briefing for this Wednesday. And it just wouldn't be May 4th if I didn't say, may the 4th be with you as well. So we've got Dr. Moreno here with us from Public Health, and we'll get started with our COVID-19 information. Good afternoon, Dr. Moreno.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Any updates or are you ready to take some questions?
Public Health has nothing to report, but we can definitely take questions from the media on the pandemic.
All right, for people who have questions for Dr. Moreno, go ahead and put them in chat and we will ask them. Okay, Dr. Moreno, your first question. The Monterey County test positivity rate is up again for the third week. Do you consider that a trend?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. So yeah, we've had at least a couple of weeks for the, it looks like the case rates are slowly increasing and a steady slow increase. So that looks like the trend is upward in terms of our case rates and I believe the positivity. This looks like it's happening in most of the Bay Area and also in California as well.
Thank you, Dr. Moreno. Another question for you. What can you tell us about the, about COVID-19 subvariant BA 2.12.1 cropping up on the East Coast?
Yeah, I really can't talk about what's happening on the East Coast, but I can just remind folks that our Public Health Lab continues to perform genomic sequencing on specimens tests positive for COVID-19 that are submitted from providers to continue to have some information as to what variants are we're seeing here in Monterey County.
The variant that was asked about, have we seen this variant?
We're currently identifying the B2 variant in some proportions here. And I can tell you that the other laboratories in California are also identifying.
And if you could mute yourself if you're not asking a question? Thank you. Another question, a follow-up question for you, Dr. Moreno. How many subvariants have been detected in Monterey County? In your lab, your public health lab?
That one, I'd have to take that back to the Fall Cup Laboratory to see if they have that information.
Are those available yet on the website or can we do a follow-up with that?
Again, I'll have to take it to the laboratory and see if they have that information.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Moreno today for COVID-19? All right, Dr. Moreno, another question. Omicron was first reported in South Africa and was responsible for the winter surge here. Now, the subvariant BA4 and BA5 are being reported there as well as other countries and some U.S. states. What do you know about those strains?
Yeah, right now we're identifying the, still identifying Omicron, B1 and B2 here in Monterey County. I don't believe we've identified those variants, but again, I can check with the laboratory and see if they've identified either of those strains.
Thank you, Dr. Moreno. Any other questions for Dr. Moreno today? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Dr. Moreno, for joining us and we will follow up with that one question about the subvariants. We will follow up and get a response for the person who asked.
Yeah, we'll do our best. Thanks, ma'am.
Thanks very much, Dr. Moreno. So our next topic is CalFresh, and many of you may not know, but May is CalFresh Awareness Month. It's a time to focus on the tremendous value that this benefit has for those who need it. We're very happy to be joined by Yaneth Fiegas, who is going to talk about CalFresh, including dissmelling a lot of myths about this benefit. Plus, she was here earlier at the beginning of last month talking about the Medi-Cal expansion, and she'll be talking about that as well. Good afternoon, Yaneth. Can you hear me, Yaneth?
Sorry, Maya, I was having some trouble.
I gotcha. We hear you.
Thank you for the introduction. Good afternoon, everyone. So yes, I do, I actually have a brief PowerPoint here with a quick overview on the CalFresh program. So I can go ahead and share my screen if you allow me to here.
Please do, please do.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, can everybody see my screen okay?
We can.
Okay, great. So that's CalFresh here. So CalFresh is known federally as the Supplement Nutrition Assistant Program. So SNAP provides monthly food benefits to individuals and family with low income, and it provides economic benefits to community members, to communities. So CalFresh is the largest food program in California, and it provides an essential hunger safety net. So CalFresh is federally mandated in California and is state-supervised and county-operated. CalFresh benefits can help by buying nutritious foods for a better diet. CalFresh benefits stretch food budgets, allowing individuals and families to afford nutritious food, including more fruits, vegetables, and other healthy foods. So the amount of benefits a household can receive is dependent on a household size, accountable income, and monthly expenses, such as housing and utility expenses. The program does issue monthly benefits on an EBT card. That's an electronic benefits transfer card, and food may be purchased at any grocery store or farmer's market that accepts EBT cards. And so the eligibility requirements are to be a U.S. citizen or legal permanent resident and be within the income limits. So it is possible to have a mixed household where maybe the parents are not eligible for the program. However, their children can still be eligible to receive CalFresh benefits just as long as the parents are within the income limits. So some individuals are under the impression that if the adults in the household, like the parents or single parent that's in the household, isn't a U.S. citizen or legal permanent resident, that the household can't be eligible for CalFresh. So again, that's not always true. It can be possible, you know, for it to be a mixed household where only certain individuals meeting the eligibility requirements can still receive benefits. And so there are five ways to apply for CalFresh. So our most popular one is online. So we have two ways to apply, either on benefitscal.com or getcalfresh.org. We also offer assistance over the telephone with taking the application for the customer over the telephone. And customers also do have the option to fax in applications. Of course, we also have the mail-in option, and then we also have the in-person office visits and the Dropbox locations. So we do have three district offices. We have one in Salinas, one in Seaside and King City. And we are open to the public now. So we are serving customers in person. Our lobbies are open. And so the application processing timeframes are, it takes 30 days from the date of that the application is received for eligibility specialists to process the application. So that's from the point that the customer applies to when the eligibility worker conducts the intake interview, issues requests for verification, the time it takes, you know, for the customer to comply and provide required information, and to the time it takes for them to determine the application. So by the 30th date, the customer should know whether or not they're eligible for the program.
Yaneth, I don't mean to interrupt you, but are you, your slide is, is it moving?
Uh-oh. Let's see. Let me, sorry about that. It was moving on my end.
No, your audio issue is resolved.
Can you see it now?
Yes, we're at the application processing timeframe.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I'm not sure.
No problem, no problem. We're good.
Okay, so there are applications meeting expedited service criteria, and these are processed within three business days of when the application is received. So applicants found eligible to expedite a services are issued benefits onto the electronic benefits transfer card by the third calendar day. So we do have that expedited service available. And so the criteria for expedited services are as follows. So either one, liquid resources do not exceed $100. So this includes cash on hand, money in the bank, you know, cash really in any place, or have less than $150 in gross monthly income. That includes a prorated share from excluded persons and any CalWorks payment received in the month of application. Or be an eligible household whose gross income and liquid resources are less than the shelter expense, rent or mortgage plus current utility deductions amount. So that can be like water, PG&E, you know, if anybody's paying trash, things like that. And so the eligibility determination, so CalFresh applicants will receive a notice of action once an eligibility determination is reached. Again, that should be received by the 30, it will go out by the 30th date. The notice of the action will include a detailed explanation of the program eligibility determination. So it will tell the customer if they were eligible, basically what information was used to make the determination. And if they are found ineligible, it will also explain the reason why their application was denied. So applicants do have the right to ask for a fair hearing if they disagree with any county actions. So requests for a fair hearing must be received within 90 days of the county action unless they have a good cause. And so the maximum gross income limits are here as follows. So for a household size of one, the maximum gross income is 2,148, and the maximum benefit amount is 250, and the minimum is $20. So these income limits do change every year on October 1st. And so these income limits can vary depending on the number of people in the household. So the recertification and continuing CalFresh benefits means that once a customer starts to receive CalFresh, the customer must keep the department informed about any changes in order to ensure CalFresh benefits are correct, to ensure that the notice of action and any other correspondence really goes to the correct address. We want to make sure our customers stay informed. And also, majority of CalFresh recipients are required to submit a semi-annual eligibility status report. So we call it a SAR7, and that's once per year, six months after an application, followed by the annual recertification. So that's 12 months after the application. The eligibility specialist will explain to the customers their reporting responsibilities and requirements for them, you know, to stay up to date with their reporting responsibilities. And so this is our EBT card. This is what it looks like. So recipients of public assistance do get their benefits issued onto the EBT card. So this is where we issue not only CalFresh benefits, but any cash assistance like CalWorks and even general assistance. And EBT is accessible not only in California, but also in the other 49 states and the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. And so we always include a slide for also for the public, for customers to really be aware and to know how to protect their EBT card because, you know, there are bad guys out there who, you know, unfortunately, sometimes contact customers, you know, presenting as maybe like a county official requesting information. So we always include this slide here to just share that, you know, the county or state would never text or call customers requesting any personal information, such as like an EBT card number, especially not a personal identification number, PIN, right? And so we just basically give them here the steps on what to follow in case this happens and how to basically keep their card protected. So here's the information. And there is a customer service number on the card itself. And that if, of course, if they lose the card, that's not possible. They can always make contact with us too. And, you know, we will be able to help them and give them any information that they need. And that concludes my presentation for CalFresh. I do just want, I do want to just remind everybody that there are important changes that came into effect May 1st to the Medi-Cal program, and that's for our older and disabled population. So that's the older adult expansion. And so this really extends eligibility and it makes, helps more people be eligible to Medi-Cal. So this is for anybody who is 50 years of age or older, whom meet all Medi-Cal eligibility criteria, graduation status does not matter. So I just wanted to share that we do have approximately 188 individuals in Monterey County receiving Medi-Cal benefits. And just a little over 100,000 are adults of those. 3,440 adults, 50 years of age or older, receiving restricted benefits have transitioned to full-scale benefits as of May 1st.
So it sounds like, Yaneth, there's still a ways to go in terms of letting people know that these, there are expanded eligibility. There are more people that need to be reached.
Yeah, so we are, we are, the cases that were already in restriction and restricted benefits have transitioned over, but we are still continuously working to get the word out. You know, we've put together some outreach material and we've sent out some email blasts, and we are working with some of our partners too to get the word out. And so, yeah, we will continue to work on getting the word out. We want to make sure everybody's aware of this change, and we want to invite everyone to apply. There is also more changes to the program. So this is also another change effective April 1st. The postpartum coverage for Medi-Cal has also extended. So the postpartum coverage period has now been extended from 60 days to 365 days. So individuals will maintain coverage through their pregnancy and 12-month extended postpartum period, regardless of income changes, citizenship, or immigration status. So important changes definitely to Medi-Cal, and that's all I have today. Does anybody have any questions for me?
And if there are any questions for Yaneth, go ahead and put them in chat. And while we see if there are any questions, just want to remind people that we are going to be talking a lot more about the Medi-Cal expansion. We have a special press event going on tomorrow, Thursday, Cinco de Mayo, at Natividad Hospital at noon. We have health leaders, social services, hospital leaders, city and county leaders, all coming together to really showcase the work that we're doing now to transition people and to encourage more people to apply and know that they may very well be eligible and not be afraid to apply. So that is coming up at noon tomorrow at Natividad.
I also wanted to add one more thing, Maya. I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
So I just also wanted to communicate that Medi-Cal beneficiaries are not subject to public charge. We have also included information, just the website really, where customers can visit to just obtain more information regarding that. And so that's included on all our flyers. And Maya, what I'll do too is I'll go ahead and share the flyer with you, and maybe you could share here with the group.
I will. Thank you. I don't have any questions for you. I think you covered everything really thoroughly. Thanks very much for walking us through CalFresh, a really important benefit, and then telling us a little bit more about the Medi-Cal expansion. All right, we are going to move on to a very interesting topic that is being brought forward by our Workforce Development Board. They have got a great internship opportunity for local youth this summer. If you, if you're young, or if you've got someone age 18 to 24 in your family or has a family friend in that age group, they might be very interested in a digital marketing internship with Meta and Facebook. So Laura Kirchner, our friend at the Workforce Development Board, is here to tell us all about this really interesting opportunity. Hi, Laura.
Hi, ma'am. Thank you so much for having me today. Appreciate it. Happy to be here.
So tell me about this internship. How did we, how did we get Facebook on board?
You know, this is a great initiative that we are part of. I believe it is a statewide level with Meta and Facebook. It is an eight-week fellowship for the summer, for this summer, from July 5th through August 26th. And these summer fellows will work with local companies to establish or enhance local business marketing through digital advertising on Facebook and Instagram. Very exciting. This program, it's a competitively paid internship experience for this summer. Again, it pays $18 an hour for up to 30 hours a week, up to 14 weeks through Career Connections, and it's powered by Facebook and Meta in partnership with the Monterey County Workforce Development Board. And the initiative is to put local young adults between the ages of 18 and 24, that you mentioned earlier, with 21st century skills that connects them to digital marketing careers. It's a win-win for everybody. We're excited to be involved. We want to encourage our local business community to log on to our website, and that's montereycountywdb.org to learn more about the initiative. We're just real excited to participate. It's going to be a great program.
So this is, this is an internship where you're not going to be making coffee. You're going to be making ads. I mean, you're really going to be hands-on doing digital marketing for a local company.
Absolutely. It is going to be, it's going to take somebody who really knows digital marketing. You're going to have to know how to spell. You're going to have to have some pretty good communication skills to be able to participate in this, in this program. It's a, it'll be a competitive kind of the thing. I think Facebook is going to help us decide where the interns go. So as far as the pairing goes with the businesses, the business community has found out about this just recently because of our press release and whatnot, and the information on the website, and they're excited to move forward. So we think this is going to be a real win-win for the community and for our young people as well.
So it's pretty exciting for the interns, but for the businesses, how are they getting connected to find that intern? How are the two getting together?
You know, that's something that will be done internally once the businesses apply. So what businesses who are interested, what they need to do is log on to our website, montereycountywdb.org, and put in your application. I put that information in the chat. The same goes with job seekers between those ages who are interested in participating. You're going to have to sign up on both sides, and then we will bring them together once the deadline is at hand, which is, I believe it's coming up, May 13th, where the businesses, the business community needs to get on it right away and log in and fill out the application to participate. It's fairly straightforward. We just need the information listed on the website, and encourage you again to log on montereycountywdb.org to learn more.
Now, I know you've also, besides this great internship opportunity, you have a lot of job fairs coming up.
We do. Thank you so much for reminding me. In fact, we've got three in-person job fairs, if you can believe that, for May. We've got one next week for the Naval Activity Support Monterey. That's on the 10th, from 10 to 3, and that'll be at our new office here in Salinas, 344 Salinas Street. We've got a youth job fair on May 18th, and that will be, that will be from 2 to 5 p.m. We're partnering with the Salinas Union High School District and the ROP program to put that on on May 18th, again, 2 to 5 p.m. And then we've got another job fair, transportation and driver-related job fair on May 21st, and that will be from 10 to noon. That's on a Saturday. So we've got a lot of things going on. You'll learn all about all our initiatives and different programs on our website. There's a lot going on here. We're real proud of that, and we're real anxious to bring job seekers back. There's a lot of jobs right now. Take advantage of what we have listed on the website. There's a great job board on there that gets a lot of hits. Take a look at our social media pages. We're active. We're moving. We're inviting people back. We're here to help, and we're delighted to bring businesses and job seekers together.
Thank you very much, Laura, for sharing all this with us, and always something good happening at Workforce Development.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks. All right, and our last topic is a very interesting one. Fire season is always top of mind in Monterey County, and there's a project being developed to help agriculture and livestock operators work closely with firefighters to have some type of limited access if there is a disaster. It's a very innovative idea, and we're very pleased to have Jose Cheng, who's our Assistant Agricultural Commissioner, here to talk about an AgPass, if you will, program. Hi, Jose.
Yeah, hello, ma'am. Good afternoon, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity to give you an overview of the AgPass program, which was presented to the Board of Supervisors yesterday, and it is a referral that it came from Supervisor Lopez. And essentially, you might be asking yourself, which was a question, you know, a while back that I used to ask myself, what is the AgPass? And so the AgPass, you know, it is a program that will be developed within our office with other agencies, which essentially would allow commercial, you know, livestock, as well as, you know, vineyard operations, limited emergency access to areas that otherwise are restricted, you know, due to a wildfire. And we know that in 2020, you know, that was an issue, or other similar disaster. And the ultimate purpose of the AgPass, it is, you know, to protect or care for agricultural assets, as well as, you know, the ranchers and livestock producers and vineyards, they can provide support to emergency personnel, such as, you know, helping them identify water points or key roads to, you know, where the fires are or is. And it would also, you know, allow the county to provide a uniform way to vet these commercial agricultural operations. As I, at the beginning, I mentioned, you know, this is going to, the implementation of this program is going to be, the success of the program is going to depend as well from other agencies, such as, and ma'am mentioned this, such as the Monterey County Regional Fire Protection District, the CALFIRE, San Marino Monterey Unit, the Sheriff's Office, County Council, the County Executive Office, and the Office of Emergency Services. These are some of the partners that are going to be key, like I said, in the implementation of the program. And in addition to that, we would also be consulting, you know, with other agencies, such as the Monterey County Farm Bureau, the Monterey Cattle, the Cattleman Associations, the U.S. Forest Service, the California Highway Patrol, the Animal Services of the County, as well as the Monterey County Witness and Grower Associations. They will be key agencies, which will be consulted on the development. And lastly, I just wanted to say that, you know, there will be obviously an eligibility requirement to qualify for the AgPass, and we will be working on that eligibility requirement coming up in the coming weeks. And as well, we are going to create an eligibility committee. And this eligibility committee will be composed of the county fire, the sheriff's office, the Monterey County Cattleman Association, the Farm Bureau of the County, as well as the Monterey County Witness and Grower Association. And so once, you know, so once, and the last key component of the AgPass is going to be that those car holders, they will be required to go to a training, and this training is going to be required before they can get the AgPass. And we think that the AgPass is going to be valid for two years. And once, you know, that is expired, the AgPass holder will be required to, it will be on the, on the pass holder to renew the pass. And so that's essentially what I have, ma'am, you know, and it is something that we are going to be working on with other partners, like I said, and we are excited to have, I think in other counties, you know, they are already establishing some of these AgPass programs. And now here in Monterey, we're going to create something for us.
So have you gotten good feedback from the Ag community on this idea?
Absolutely. I know. That's a great question. Thank you, ma'am. And yes, absolutely, you know, the feedback from the, from the industry has been in full support of the program, and especially the Cattleman Association, as well as the Witness Association of the County, because they have been some of the most impacted folks. And just to give you, you know, an example, you know, in 2020, the wine grape industry suffered about 46% of their, of the economic loss, and everything was due to the wildfires. And so we have a full support of the industry to develop this, the AGPASS program.
And in fact, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, during the presentation yesterday at the board, there was a lot of emphasis to make sure that the Ventners and Growers Association were included, you know, not just, it's not just livestock that cattlemen may need to go in and care for. There are other assets as well.
That is correct. You know, in my previous life, which I like to say, you know, I just do work in Napa County. And, you know, I remember in 2018 when, you know, there were fires up there, and the wine grape industry, you know, significantly had a lot of losses. And of course, you know, coming to Monterey County, which we have, you know, almost the same number of fakers as, you know, places like Napa. And so, yeah, they definitely are going to be incorporated in the program. And that was just an oversight for them not to be included in the report.
And the other thing people may wonder is, you know, I guess it's the training that you're going to have with the, with the ranchers and the property owners and the firefighters. They've got to work together in the time of emergency. You want to give them a pass, but you don't want to give them a pass to get in the way of saving life and property.
Yeah, that is correct, ma'am. And, you know, just because a car holder is going to have an AGPASS, it will, it will not necessarily guarantee, you know, a passage to where they need to go. Ultimately, the department and the sheriff's office, you know, they will have to make a determination if it is safe for the pass holder to go tender or care for, you know, their livestock or care for, you know, the vineyard or care for the winery equipment.
And so where, where do we see this going next? What kind of timeline do you think we might put on the AGPASS project?
Our, you know, we are very, I want to say, you know, we want to be a little bit aggressive on this because, you know, the fires, especially, you know, before August or September. We hope to have that developed by then. Now that we have received the green line from the Board of Supervisors and the direction, we are going to start working in our office, you know, with the, with the partners to develop the program and also identify all of those folks that are going to need an AGPASS. So to answer your question specifically, you know, we hope to have it before the end of the year. And preferably, you know, before the end of the, before the beginning of the fire season and now the fire season, you know, is year-round.
Or before the worst, worst of the weather. Of course, we don't know when that is either, right?
Exactly.
Thank you very much, Jose, for giving us some details about the AGPASS. We look forward to having you back and talking more about it when we're, maybe when we're ready to launch.
Thank you, ma'am. Really appreciate it.
Thanks very much, and thanks, oh, hold on. Jose, I've got a question for you. It just came in. If anyone were to file a complaint or want to provide input on an AGPASS, who would they reach out to?
They will be, reach out to the Agricultural Commissioners Office. We will be the lead agency, you know, with the AGPASS. And so if there is such a complaint, you know, that can be referred to us.
All right. Thanks very much for taking that last-minute question. That wraps up our briefing for this week. Thanks very much for being with us. Our next briefing is next week, and we will see you then.